I would like to call to order our meeting for the Glenco Village Board for Thursday, October 17th at 6 o'clock. Let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax here, trustee listener.
Here.
Trustee Mealopolis.
Here.
Trustee Ruben.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
We're not live screening the meeting tonight, but the video recording will be available on our YouTube channel. So this is the opportunity, I'm looking around, I don't think I see anybody, but this is the opportunity for anybody in attendance to address the board regarding the non-agenda items. I'll ask the public comments on agenda items be made when we get to that item. All comments are limited to three minutes. We're timing you, we'll tell you when you have to stop talking. Are there any non-agenda comments? There aren't. Okay. The next item on the agenda is presentation of the Glenco Sustainability Vision Plan, and I will ask our management analyst Jeff Moensley and STF members Barbara B. Gallagher and George Crapson to present. So take it away.
Okay, good evening. About a year ago, we embarked on something that was in the initial charter for the STF, which was develop a sustainability plan for the village of Glenco. That initial charter was passed, I think, back in 2015, 2016. So it's been a while since we got around to a plan. I think planning was in the air this year. The village plan, the library plan, the park plan, just seemed appropriate to do a plan. Anyway, after about, well, we started on this about this time last year. So it's been about a year of a lot of effort from a lot of people. Off and on, 23, 24 members of the Sustainability Task Force, including both voting members and non-voting members. So we have a good cross-section of the community working on this effort. Right here is our Brad is our current chairperson or our prime chairperson. They can see you. Again, Brad. Feel free to sit up. That's all is a cheer. Anyway, that's the kind of the background we're standing for. I think that we might go to kick off and lead into it. George, can you just start it?
Yeah, I'm George Crapson, for those who haven't seen, I'm a volunteer with the STF, non-voting member. And Barney and I have kind of correlated this with the input for this plan, which you all have copies of, came from all those members of the STF. What we'd like to do tonight is just quickly go through an overview of that plan, and then open it up for any questions that they have, how we have their decisions. Oh, brush yourself, we're there.
Okay.
Okay. First of all, oops.
There you go.
If you don't know where you're going, anywhere you take is just fine. So we thought we should lay down some ideas of what to remain by sustainability. So there are a number of these that come in the first stages of the plan that we had. The first one is what Glenco will look like, and we are saying we should be committing to the goal of a net zero carbon footprint for the entire community by 2050. That's in line with all the global initiatives, federal government, et cetera. The consequence of not meeting that goal is some of the nasty weather that you've all read about, and some of us have experienced, but here getting even worse. Okay, so the first thing is we'll have that zero by 2050. The next sustainability issue is that we should be prepared for all of the residents in Glenco to be able to live in housing that is sustainable with respect to the climate. Particularly, the issue here is we anticipate things will get hotter, we'll need air conditioning and power to run it, and we're going to have an increasingly aging population that's very vulnerable to high temperatures. We need to plan for that. The village will reduce its waste to zero. That's an ideal. That's what we would like to go to, because we're running out of waste space, and waste costs energy, and then can create even more greenhouse gases. Another vision will be that all residents have a supply of clean, safe drinking water at an affordable price. And we've all seen some of the suggestions that maybe the water drinking isn't completely free of the town. We will be in a position where we can manage our stormwater, because as we all know, rainfall is going to get more frequent, heavier, interspersed during the drought. We need a stormwater management system. The physical environment of Glenco should be, as we've stated here, clean, quiet, healthy, and emotionally supportive and collaborative. That has a lot of aspects to it. The biosphere is going to be hopefully native planting, although native plants are going to change as the climate changes. We'll have stuff growing here that only grows now in Southern Illinois or Tennessee. But we want to get rid of the invasive. And we will have a business community that is in sync with us and collaborative in meeting all of the sustainability goals. Those are the vision items that we thought were important to set the groundwork for the decisions that you will all be making in future. The plan of the structure, we have four major areas that we're going to address. Carbon Reduction and Transportation being the top one, Water and the Environment, Waste Reduction in Recycling, and Sustainable Businesses. I'll cover the first few here, and then Barney will take over your subsequent. Okay, so what does climate change mean for Glenco? Based on the research that the STF did, the basic science of what's going on, our future here is probably going to be higher temperatures. How high depends on how good we are at reducing greenhouse gas emissions globally. We will have heat waves, like we've seen in Phoenix this year, of 31 days of 110 degrees over. We will see more 90-degree-plus and 100-degree-plus days in Glenco. And they will stick around both. There will be more frequent heavy rainfalls. Again, this is unpredictable, it's the weather after all. The rainfalls are probably going to be interspersed with longer periods of drought with higher temperatures. So we'll be facing all of that. I might point out that, I mean, this all sounds kind of speculative, but I noted in the news recently, June 29th, Calumet City, about 25 miles from here, got nine inches of rain in less than three hours, which is, quote, "a 500-year storm." Of course, they were flooded. I think we can expect to see incidents like that here. We need to be ready for it. And one item I wanted to bring up, there was an interview with the CEO of SCORE, S-C-O-R, which is a major reinsurance in Europe. Their business is paying attention to catastrophic weather events, because where they make money from that depends on how many hurricanes and floods occur in the world. In the interview, this is in September, they asked them about, well, you planned for climate exchange, right? And he said, "Well, we expected this, the changes that we've conceived, we expected this to be gradual and be something that we experience slowly. It would take 10 years, 20 years to really form the curve." The reality is, it's a very sudden change and appears to be here to stay. So this is a person whose livelihood, business, and career depends on the conditions of weather. Okay, where are we in Glenco? The major fact that we came up with is our carbon footprint. The number of tons of greenhouse gases that are emitted per individual in Glenco is the blue bar. The United States average is the red. The yellow is the global average per person. And I don't have a zero one, a green one for where we want to be. The goal is zero. You can see that we are in Glenco about 1.7 times the average emission of the average American, and Americans are double, more than double what the world is. We produce a lot of carbon dioxide. We have cars, we travel a lot, we fly, we have bigger homes, we heat them with gas. We produce a lot of carbon emissions here. So we have a high carbon footprint. So what we need to do, which regarding that, let me go. Our recommendations for the village are for the village to reduce, this is village operations, to reduce carbon emissions to zero by 2050. Ideally, we mean everything within the confines of the village, including residents, but you as the village trustees can only have limited influence on everybody in the village, but you need to set the pace. We suggest that you each individually prepare a carbon footprint for yourselves and your residences, but the village itself or our village operations should do that on a manual basis, track progress. The goal here is to eliminate fossil fuel use. Burning natural gas and gasoline and diesel fuel are major sources of this. Transportation being part of that, we feel that while Glenco has an active transportation plan in place, it is not fully completed, we're still working on it, and Glenco does have a high blockability score, not that big. It's easy for most people to walk downtown, but there are things in the way. We need to increase safe routes for people to walk, for kids to bike to school, and in general, reduce our reliance on cars. Okay, water, would you like to speak over this?
Yeah. We are lucky, most places in the country right now, we're talking about water in a sustainability context, will be saying, what do we have to do to have enough water to seed through our future? We are blessed with an abundance of water. Our curse is that we're going to get a lot more, as George indicated, particularly the unplanned rain event of six inches and four inches. According to the experts who study this stuff, we're looking at probably a two times increase in the frequency of two-inch-plus rain events here in Glenco in northern Illinois. That's going to create, our problem is, what do we do with it? Where does it go? We all know, well, it goes to the east and it goes to the west. It goes to the east, it goes down the ravines into Lake Michigan, and to the west, it goes out to the Gulf of Mexico by a long route, but it doesn't ultimately get there. But in the meantime, we've got, we are contributing a lot to where that water goes. We have an abundance of impervious surfaces, all of our streets, sidewalks, parking lots. We, you know, in a residential context, a lot of patios, a lot of impervious surface, that's something that creates an opportunity for us. We can decrease the amount of impervious surface and increase the amount of water that we're absorbing from those events. I guess our biggest issue is probably the fragile drainage system that we have, as we all know, it's a public, it's privately owned ravine, but it has a public use. We're putting our water down that ravine. We're depending on the health of that ravine to make our water, our stormwater runoff system sustainable. So one of the things that we think we need to think about is, how do we attract, how do we approach that? The other point on the water side, we don't have a comprehensive plan that looks at what our infrastructure is anticipating this new change to our environment. We have a comprehensive water plan that was done a few years ago, it's fairly off the shelf, but we haven't done a real study, hired experts, and looked into, okay, what do we do from both a green and a gray infrastructure standpoint to manage our stormwater? So rather than focusing on how are we going to get water and water our plants, we need to think about how are we going to manage the water that's coming out of the sky? The other point, okay, we've got, oh, I forgot to do the slide. Let's see. There we go. We just did a urban forest plan, we've got an excellent existing tree, a diverse tree system. The one thing that we did not cover in that plan, we all know we have, is a huge buckthorn issue. You know, I don't know if any of you watched the library program the other night on buckthorn, but 36% of Cook County is buckthorn, and we are actually the leaders of that, because where did buckthorn begin? It was brought here, it was brought to the North Shore back in 1900 as a shrub, and it has done very well. But that's something that we really need to address as a part of, that's kind of the obvious low-hanging fruit in terms of looking at biodiversity issue for us long-term. Heritage Tree Preservation is another area that we need to take a look at. We have a good ordinance, we don't have the toughest ordinance. That's something that we, the Tree Commission should take a look at. We have landscapes that are dominated by grass. Everybody loves their turf. And turf leads to fertilizer, herbicide use, which all runs off into stormwater, into lagoons, into Lake Michigan. Those are negative things for the environment, for the sustainability of our environment, and that's something we should be addressing as we go forward. These are, again, things that we need to start planning for now. So some of the things we are recommending is funding a comprehensive stormwater evaluation plan, establishing a public and private ravine partnership. Perhaps we can set up a 501(c)(3) corporation with the residents of the ravines and get some grant money to help sustain those ravines, particularly at this point, I think the C4 and C5 ravines in the last study had been both judged to be at risk. Those are ravines, one of them is, I think the C4 is, is just, one is off of, just north of Maple Hill, the other's kind of south, they're over in that, along that, both are in that area. And both of them are, you know, where we need to look at, what can we do to improve the health of those ravines? Strengthen the tree code. Again, if we look at the Glenview code, it's got, it's got more teeth to it for preserving heritage trees. And then, you know, what can we do to promote biodiversity, discourage turf? We in our own, in our own plantings in the village, can we look at more natural plantings? Moving away from turf grass to, say, a tall fescue, which is, you don't have to mow it, you don't have to water it, you don't have to fertilize it. It's just, and it's nice and green, makes a lush, it's a lush alternative to turf, regular turf grass. The other area that we focused on, the waste cycle, waste reduction and recycling, and composting. As George pointed out, waste reduction equals carbon reduction. Food waste have, from what standpoint of looking at composting, that is, food waste is 24% of all waste and 7% of greenhouse gases. So it's a major greenhouse gas contributor that we, we can, again, other cities have made strides, we have a good composting program, how can we improve it and get more people to take part in it? And we, you know, are, like I said, the waste issue, 4% of the population in the world, and we produce 12% of the annual municipal waste. So some of the recommendations, some are developing baseline, a five, 10, and 15-year baseline for landfill diversion goals. We have to set, set that and how we approach it, implement plans to get to that. You know, one is, you know, a program encouraging community-wide composting. Some areas are suggesting that making composting mandatory for residents, something to consider. Increase the cost to dispose of waste by taxing it, you make people a little less, you know, more hesitant to just throw it in the can. Panning single-use items, plastics and bags, I don't, again, we have, I think it's stated in the introduction to the plan, there are some home rule issues that are raised by all these things. So that's something we'll have to take a look at, can we, can we get to the point where we can impose those kinds of rules and regulations? And then something we can, we can manage is looking to zero waste at all public events. We can manage that. That's something that is within the purview of the village and the Park District. Lastly, Sustainable Businesses. This is a real challenge. We have the same carbon and waste reduction issues that apply to our villages that apply to the residents, to our businesses. Our problem is building owners are handling the waste. The village doesn't pay for it, and actually typically the tenant doesn't, it's the building owner. How do we incentivize the building owner to introduce some kind of recycling or composting program for them? I saw in the long-range plan that's being worked on by the Fat Commission, one of the aspiration posts to get 100% composting by our built restaurants. That's, that's a great goal. How do we, how do we incentivize them to do that? That's something that would be, when I looked around just the other day, I went to the area just behind Black Sheep, the florist shop is there, there is not only no composting, there is no recycling, there is just waste bins. And so the land, the building owners or managers, somehow we have to get to them, incentivize them, get them motivated to make some changes until it's up, and get it in line with the vision that we articulate as a village in terms of what we want as the sustainability program goals. Sustainable practices are good business practices. We did a survey of the residents back about a year ago, we had something like 500 responses to our survey. I think that's more than people vote in some of our elections. In any event, they pointed out they want that from our business community. So one of the things we've been doing, we're working now with the village, Business Group of the Village, to communicate our, you know, what the village residents say they want the businesses to do. But again, it comes down to business, we can get to the business owner, but can we get to the manager, owner of the building, because that's where we really need to get to. Finally, just a couple of very general recommendations, and these are pretty critical. The first is, in all of our decisions at the C level, the staff level, when you're looking at a problem, a project, a process, sustainability should be top of mind. That's what you think of it. And again, it's very, we're very encouraged, what's developing in the Planning Commission, sustainability is being identified as a key stone to our future. It's a critical factor for our plan. So we, we're very excited about that. We would strongly support getting some expertise, hiring the expertise, a consulting firm to develop a comprehensive plan, maybe using this as a, as a guide of, you know, these are the things we want you to look at, but there are, we don't have the skill set on the Sustainability Task Force to do a cost-benefit analysis of some of these changes. We don't have those kind of, those kind of talents, but it's out there. It's been done by other villages. It'd be an incredibly valuable thing for Glenco to invest in now to get a tad of the curve. The sooner we have a plan that we can say, these are the things we're going to do, the sooner we're going to get to a more sustainable future in a zero-carbon footprint. And finally, we really need, all due respect to Jeff, he's been an amazing support for our efforts, but this is getting too big. There's just too much on the table for one part-time person to be able to manage and drive home, particularly if we're, you know, we're taking, making it top of mind in all decisions, that's a real challenge. So we would strongly urge funding a dedicated staff person to a sustainability management role in the village at staff level. So those are kind of the general outlines or recommendations. I think there's a lot more detail in the report, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it. And we did, actually, our first draft was several pages longer, more detailed, but we had the suggestion at staff, we decided, well, we might trim this down a bit, make it a little bit more appetizing to look at. So anyway, thank you for your commitment to it, your support to the task force, and all that we've been working on the past few years. This, to, at least to me, is, this is the future. This is what we've got to really commit to as a village and move forward with your support.
Thank you for, to all the people who are here, presenters or non-presenters. We are grateful for all the work you've done. We're grateful for the thought you put into it. In theory, we agree with all this stuff, and I guess, you know, everybody's identified that, okay, how do we turn this into real, recognizing that we're not rolling in blood? And we also recognize if we don't do some of this stuff, we'll pay for it later with the bad consequences. It's complicated, because if we do all this stuff, but our neighbors and other countries don't, we may all may pay for it anyway. Let me just, I, let me, yeah. So we're going to look at, okay, how do we turn this idea into a reality we could do? Just so you recognize the reality, when I first became president, one of the first things I said to the village manager was, gee, can we think about getting vehicles that are not just gas guzzlers? Can we get electric vehicles? Can we get hybrid vehicles? And I thought, first idea, public safety. And the short answer was, no. I mean, we need public, we can't, you know, they can't do their job, I love that, but they can't. They got all this stuff, even though we're small, and, I mean, we couldn't get non-efficient vehicles for years, and they, nobody would even talk to us about efficient vehicles. We've just made our first step. The public safety director's vehicle is going to be an electric vehicle. But it's, but to turn, I mean, so we had the idea, we already agree with you, but we couldn't do it. I personally, when my, one of my two air conditioners went out, and we, we had a whole presentation, I thought, okay, can I figure out how to do heat pump? Not in any realistic way. I mean, it was hugely, vastly more expensive, wouldn't work with the other, you know, it was just, it was a nightmare. So I got a more efficient thing, but I wanted it, I wanted to do heat pump, and it just wasn't plausible. So we need the experts to help us turn these excellent ideas that I think we're probably on favor of in theory, but how do we do it? How do our residents do it?
We need the expertise.
Okay, okay.
In, you know, other communities, I know Northborough, they have the Techni Road Park District facility there, that's a net-zero building. My understanding, that's a result because they hire a sustainability consultant to look at everything, and when you go to that property, not only is the facility there net-zero, but then the state park there, they have baseball fields, there's native plantings throughout that area. They've really put the investment into that, which, you know, working in conjunction with our Park District, I think we could put that investment. And I know, having sat in on their, now they're doing their development plan, they are looking at these issues, and that is top of their mind, too, of how do we use our existing facilities and, as all the new renovations, how do we build in sustainability and pay a little bit more upfront for more purpose sake?
If I could just chime in, the school district transferred to heat pump, heating and cooling years ago, and say, they're, they've now paid off the issue of investments and are saving money. So it has been done, the technology is coming.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
It's evolving.
Yeah, I mean, it's, if you're dealing with something like a school that's going to be there, I mean, we all have our individual stories, but, but we clearly want, we would like to do this. We obviously need expertise. And, you know, everything we do comes straight out of our residents' pockets for mostly property taxes, which aren't deductible anymore. And so, but I don't sense that anybody is in favor of the idea. And I think we're, we get that we want to turn this into reality, and we get we need expertise, not free either. So we have to figure out how to do that. I mean, we talked on Tuesday, we had a bunch of meetings, we talked about all this, you know, how many employees do we have? How much is, you know, how much is another employee? And we're working on all of it.
I'd add one point, and we've, we've talked a lot about this, STF and staff, you know, there's, there's a lot of value, I think, in a comprehensive look at the infrastructure components particularly. You know, we, the village does a pretty good job with its capital planning. We have a long-range, 10-year capital plan. But I do think so much of, and you guys pointed to it really well, you want to understand kind of the cost-benefit analysis of if we do this, then what does that mean, right? And so as we look at stormwater improvements, as we look at our water distribution system improvements, as we look at street sidewalks, paths, and those replacements, how do we best tie best practices into those comprehensive projects, right? And I think what is particularly important relative to a comprehensive sustainability plan is how it gets applied to those investments that we have to make. You know, electric vehicles is a really good example. In some of our operational areas, there are no electric vehicles that are practical. But where they are, how do we make sure that we're deploying them appropriately and that we're planning for the infrastructure that we need to make sure that those vehicles are, are functional? So the charging stations, we've talked in our, at the staff level for next year, bringing somebody in to take a look at our two facilities, this building and the Paul and Burke's barrage across the street, to understand how much power can get put into those spaces so that as we build out an electric fleet, we have the resources to make sure that that fleet is charging and, and that it can be support, it can support what those vehicles need. So, but that's a little bit of a piecemeal approach. What I like about this is it's, it's much more comprehensive and it overlays over what we know we have to invest in anyway, which can give, I think, a better sense of whether we allocate resources or don't toward one thing or another, depending upon where that cost benefit is.
Anybody else want to, I mean? Well, look, I just want to reiterate, we know how hard you folks have worked. We need you. We're grateful for what we're doing, and we're listening. Okay. So that's the presentation on the sustainability vision plan. Thank you. Is there any other things anyone wants to talk about? If not, is there a motion to adjourn until our 7 o'clock bill is working? Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.